All right, and again, welcome everybody to our second annual Junior Achievement Women's Future Leadership Academy session with our friends at CNBC. Again, we are so honored and proud to be your partner. We really do appreciate it and we know that the information that you share with our students is so valuable. So before we begin, I just wanted to give an overview of today's agenda. And again, students, if you're just joining us and volunteers, please feel free to say hello in that chat room. Introduce yourself. We'd love to hear who's out there, your name and your school or your organization. If you want to share a little bit how you're feeling, I know it's a stressful time of year. We're all here together and we're all going to have a great time connecting and learning and investing in ourselves. So love to hear that conversation in the chat room. It's fantastic. So here's an overview of what we're going to do today. I'm Kristy Dijon welcoming all of you. Huge thanks to our speakers and our volunteer mentors and of course, our students and our teachers who are involved. We have a really great session with featured speakers all about financial empowerment that I'm really looking forward to as well because we all need this information. Then we are going to break up into smaller groups where we're going to be having like a guided conversation all about your financial goals and collaborative breakout session. After that, we will get back together for some takeaways and closing remarks. On that note, I would like to introduce Ally, who is going to go ahead and introduce our speakers. But first, a little bit about Ally, I've been working with her for a couple of weeks to put this program together along with her team at CNBC. And it's been a pleasure and we're so grateful and excited. So Ally, we welcome you. Ally is a senior director and supervising producer at CNBC. She works on the strategic content team where she focuses on producing and booking content for partnership and sponsorship fulfillment, which include leading the editorial for the Financial Literacy Partnership with Acorns called Invest in You Ready Set Grow. Ally has been at CNBC for over 12 years and has been passionate about talking about and demystifying money ever since she took an accounting class in high school and her teacher drove a Porsche. So on that note, that's very intriguing as well to me. So Ally, I will turn it over to you to announce our speakers. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you, Kristy. It's so great to have everyone join today. We're really excited. We have a great lineup. First, I'm going to introduce Kelly Grant. Kelly Grant has been here at CNBC for almost as long as I have been. She's been here for nine years. She is a senior editor working on the financial literacy site Grow, which is also in partnership with Acorns. She's also a certified financial planner, which I just think is tremendous because she's done that while she's been at CNBC and has two young children and just a powerhouse in the space. So I'm pleased to introduce her. I also am so excited that we're joined by AJ Hess. AJ is a multimedia reporter for CNBC's Make It and she covers the way people learn and work. She's focused on higher education, student debt, which we'll get into today, the labor force. And AJ has been with CNBC for about five, six years and she lives in Brooklyn. And finally, Winnie Sun joins us today as a friend of CNBC. She's not an employee of CNBC, but she is certainly a friend of and a friend of mine too. She's the managing director and co-founder of Sun Group Wealth Partners. She's also a member of the CNBC Financial Advisor Council and just a fierce financial literacy advocate on Twitter and on social in general. So you can find her at Winnie Sun after this and follow all of the great advice that she has for everyone. So I want to get right into it because I know that everybody wants to hear about, you know, the best ways to kind of empower ourselves when it relates to our finances. And I think a great place to start is to ask each of our speakers about their first financial aha moment. And when you decided, I want to learn about this. I want to educate myself. Kristy sort of shared my own personal aha moment when I took an accounting class and my accounting teacher was driving a Porsche, which I thought was so cool. And I thought, well, if she must be good with money, so I want to learn more. But I want to turn to Winnie to tell her own little personal anecdote about why she felt like she wanted to get into the field that she's in.
Thank you, Ally. Well, it's so awesome to be here with all of you. You know, we always have these different journeys. I'm going to say mine, probably my earliest was when I was seven years old and I was in the front yard with one of my friends and we were selling avocados to the neighbors and whatnot. And at the end of this period of time, we sold a bunch of avocados because we, you know, I was talking to all the neighbors getting them by, but when we were done, he took all the money and I wasn't left with a single penny. And I remember being a kid and thinking that was really unfair. But I remember the parents saying, well, that's just business. And I said, that can't be fair. So that was sort of my earliest experience of I need to learn more about money.
And take control, right? You know, I know AJ, you and I have talked about sort of taking control of your finances too. Do you have a memory that you want to share with this group?
Yeah, I mean, thanks first of all, everyone for having us. The first one I can think of is I was an athlete for a really long time. I played soccer through college and I went to pre-Olympic camps and traveled. And after a while, all of that started to add up. And I remember going to a point where my dad sat me down and said, listen, like, you clearly want to play soccer, but we're going to have to find ways to pay for some of this. And I played basketball and there are other things. And I really kind of saw soccer as my way to go to a great school to get out, to do the things that I wanted to do in life. And so it was one of the first moments where as a young adult, I was forced to make priorities and say, how am I going to make this happen because I really want this to happen for myself?
Thank you, AJ. And Kelly, do you have a moment?
Well, I think for me, when I always knew I wanted to be a journalist and I lucked into my first job out of school happened to be working for one of the real founders of business journalism, a man named Marshall Loeb. And I was helping him write daily money tips. And before then, I had written about a lot of different things, but I loved hearing from readers and just seeing how the things that I was writing really translated into helping people. And I thought that was just such a powerful way to use what I could do to really make a difference.
Yeah, and all of you make a difference every day now. And I'm sure you were before you decided to embark on that too. But I want to talk about financial transparency because one of the things that I think we all feel as women, as females, is that we want to have our own financial independence and power and what have you. But how do you get there? Do you, how do you get there? How do you feel comfortable talking about money? Because I think a lot of families in particular, maybe don't talk about it around the table as much as they should be. And there's almost like a shameful idea around it when there shouldn't be and people get uncomfortable. Kelly, you have any advice on getting people to talk about it? I mean, you do this all day long. As an editor, you get people to talk about their money experiences, but how do we get other people, more people?
Well, I think first we have to acknowledge that it is really hard. There is, as you said, a lot of shame tied up in money. And part of it is kind of getting over that. And really, you know, if you're talking to parents, you're talking to friends, just not being embarrassed to say like, I don't know this. I don't understand this topic. And I feel like it's something that I need to know more about. Financial literacy isn't this, you know, sort of one and done thing. It's constant because the information is always changing. And it's really important to just embrace that you don't know and be curious enough to ask those key questions.
And so those key questions though, you know, Winnie, when you're advising clients, do you tell them they must talk to their kids about money? Or do you, you know, do you talk to your own kids about money? I'm sure they see what you do all day long. But how do you, you know, how do you get people to open up and to get rid of that sort of feeling of like, I can only talk to maybe one other person about that instead. I want to get my kids involved earlier. Or if somebody is watching right now and they have never had a conversation about money with their parents, how do they start?
So Ally, it's a great question. I think Kelly hit it. I mean, absolutely, we need to encourage ourselves as well as our loved ones to talk about money. I think it's like with my clients, I try to explain to them or just tell stories and figure out what it is about money that they're not comfortable talking about. Sometimes it's just they feel like they don't have enough or maybe they feel like they don't know enough about it. But I remember growing up in my household where, you know, have immigrant parents and they always said, oh, this is adult stuff. Don't worry about it. But then three months before college, my mom pulls me inside and says, you know, we have to declare bankruptcy because we, you know, we made a bad mistake with our friends. And that was like, I was like, how did I not know? I knew we were, we had our ups and downs financially that we didn't always have money, but I didn't know to what extent. I think sometimes if we get comfortable talking about the money decisions that we make in the household, it helps not only your partner, but your children. They learn from experiences. And even if you don't talk about it at home, they can sense that nervous energy. So I always say like, you know, just start, don't have formal meetings to talk about money, but just kind of weave it in and be okay with being able to say, you know, we just don't have enough right now. Like this isn't something necessary. And even my little ones, it's always wants versus needs and being comfortable talking about that. And I think then, then it makes every other discussion when you get older a lot easier.
Do your kids talk to their friends about money yet? I know your kids are still young. Should they be talking to other people outside of the family about money?
Well, you know, my kids are young, but they do talk to their kids, other kids about money. It's funny, we had a story where, I think my little one, I think he was like six, I think he was in the first grade. He came home and says, mommy, so our teacher had us do Google Earth today. And I said, oh, that's nice. And he's like, you told me we don't have any money and we're poor. And I said, okay, because I try to enforce the idea that we don't, you know, we can live with less and we don't need to have nice things. And my big thing is on experiences versus buying more stuff we don't need. And he said, but mommy, we looked at our house and our house is really big. So I don't understand, like, how do we have this house? And I said, well, you know, we don't actually own the house. The bank owns this house and we pay the mortgage. And he's like, we don't own our house? So we could have no house? I said, we could if we don't, if mommy doesn't keep working hard, daddy doesn't keep working hard. We don't pay our mortgage, the bank could take our house. And literally, he couldn't sleep that night. But you know, it's those little moments where they're going to be, they're going to have areas in their life where people are going to mention money. They're going to see other people have new shoes or new things. And I don't want their confidence to come from feeling like, you know, that confidence comes from if I have a lot of money, therefore I'm really great. But instead, we got to get to a point where money, we have these money discussions that they're just tools and we need to have them and we need to work hard to get more of them, but that they don't define our happiness. And I think that's a really important, that's actually the lesson I try to instill on my kids, just because my husband and I both didn't grow up with money. But we've just, you know, worked ourselves out from there. So now that we're able to support more family members.
I mean, I think that's a great point and that money shouldn't define your happiness. It shouldn't define you. You're not about money. Especially if the emphasis is really about, you know, your family and kids don't really know the difference. But a lot of the students that are watching might be thinking about, you know, their next chapter, whether that be, you know, going on to college and leaving high school. And, you know, and thinking about their financial independence and getting into debt and understanding debt. So with that said, a lot of folks watching might have colleges, college on their minds. I can't speak. But they might be contemplating like a specific school and unsure of their financial status. I mean, AJ, you had that conversation with your father. I've had that. I had that conversation with my father when I was going to college. But not everyone does. Like AJ, what would you suggest? Like, should people straight up ask their parents, hey, do I have enough money to go to this college I'm interested in? How should they raise it with their, with their, either mom or dad or whoever their guardian is?
Um, I think they should definitely bring it up with their parents and there's a couple of reasons. First, you want all the information at your disposal. That's going to give you the most power to make the decisions that are right for you. Second is if I think you initiate that conversation with your parents, I think your parents will love that you're showing the initiative there, right? Like, I think that'll give you any kid some good graces in their parents' side. If they're like, you know, I'm thinking proactive about my future mom and dad and I want to get down to the details. I think good kid points, like take that, that's a very easy kid point, right? What you should ask is there's a couple of things that can figure out. There's how much are you guys able to help, right? Like, get a rough sense of the numbers. You should look up what public in-state tuition is at your school in your state, right? You should think about what other types of schools that you could probably get into in your area, right? So what are the potential schools? And then I think the third thing that you should really think about is what program you want to go to, what you want to study. And you want to make sure you're doing a job that, you know, helps you get what you want out of life and some money and job security. But I also, I really want kids to think about what makes them happy too, because I know a lot of kids whose parents said, go be a mathematician. And they tried their best and they really did. But those are the kids who are the most likely to burn out and, you know, drop out at the end of the day. So those are the three things that I think you have to think about is how much can you help? What are my general options? What types of school? How much does that cost? And what type of programs am I actually interested in?
And those are the kinds of questions you need answers to in order to fill out your forms anyway. So unless your parents are doing it for you, you should know that or you should be armed with that knowledge. Kelly, can you talk a little bit about return on investment? Because I know you've done a lot of, you've done a lot of reporting or editing on this, like trying to figure out that return on investment from going to a specific college and majoring in a specific industry to then when you're getting out of that college, you know, how do you analyze that? Or how have you advised in some of your stories?
Well, AJ actually does regular rankings on this. So I would first tell you, check out Make It and look up her byline to be able to look at this. But there is a lot of data out there when it comes to, you know, particular schools and programs within those schools. What do grads typically make and how much student debt do they leave with? Because the broad rule of thumb is that when you're thinking about student debt, ideally, you want to keep that number that you're borrowing below what you expect your salary to be in that first year after graduation. That's where they sort of say that's going to end up with a payment that is manageable based on that salary. You know, there are some more intricacies to it. That's the, that's the broad rule. So you can, you want to look at that data for like, what are the typical salaries for people from with your major from this school? What's the typical debt look like? And really be able to see, is that going to be worth it? Because there are a lot of different options for schools that you could maybe say, you know, what's the best value that I can get? And it may be, you know, the big name school or it may not.
And that's the data that you should be armed with also when you're going to talk to your parents so that they, you know, in collaboration, you can make a decision more easily and whatnot. Let's talk a little bit about debt though, you know, is student debt good debt?
I know AJ has some informed opinions on this one too. I would say it can be, it can be sort of broadly, good debt is debt that you're taking on, that you're going to see benefits from down the line. Particularly like a student debt, it's that you expect to earn more, right? To be able to recoup that. But it can also be really dangerous debt. You know, you have to know that you're going to come out running those numbers and that you're going to have an opportunity in your field to be gainfully employed. And some schools, that's a little, and some programs, that's a little harder than with others.
Yep. That's definitely true. And you know, I think one thing I want to talk about too, since we're in this group is, you know, student debt is an issue that disproportionately impacts women and girls. We're more likely to go to college. We're more likely to take on student loans. It's more likely to impact Black and Latinx college graduates. So in those ways, in the systemic ways in which student debt disproportionately impacts these people, it's bad debt. But when we think about individuals taking the chances that they need in order to get the careers that they want, that's a much more nuanced conversation, right? Each individual person has to think about, what's the right amount for me? How much do I expect to make after graduation? And what's the right kind of balance?
And I know that there's some conversation in the chat about considering a good debt because it's an investment that you put, exactly, you're putting into yourself, which is a great way to think about it. But you also have to be realistic about what future career path you have ahead of you, especially as a female, as a woman. And you don't want to be left with mounds of debt and limited job options as well.
There's also a great question in the chat, if I can, Ally, about interest, which I think is really important with finance and with student debt. Because I can tell you, one of my like, really like bad moments, aha moments, if you will, was coming out of college and not having thought about that the amount I borrowed every year was compounding, which basically means it was earning interest on the balance and the interest. So it kept building while I was in school and kind of getting that letter from my loan servicer and had been expecting one number and seeing a number that was double that because it had just kept accruing that whole time I was in college. So it's a really important concept to think about when you're deciding how much debt you're going to take on because taking out a $5,000 loan in your freshman year is not, it's not going to be 5,000 by the time you graduate, depending on the loan that you've got, that's can be quite expensive.
That's a great point. And compound interest was, somebody in the chat asked to explain it. Do you, Winnie, do you want to take that one on? Do you want to explain how compound interest works?
Sure, sure. So compound interest basically means that it's kind of like, I think the best way to explain it would be like, let's say we had $1,000 and then the interest rate, let's say, was 3%. So then $1,000, 3%, that adds up and then that's your total. And then very next year, then it's 3% on top of the $1,000 plus the 3% and it just keeps on getting bigger. So it's just like credit card debt, or if you were to borrow, you know, money that you don't pay off right away, it will just keep growing. Now, compounded can work in your favor if you're investing because the same sort of concept is there. So your, any percentage of gain kind of just multiplies each and every year. So there's a lot of fun ways to look at it, but the easiest way to look at it is just simply taking, basically imagine a small mound of Play-Doh and every time you add another layer, it just gets bigger and bigger because it's compounding that way. Hopefully that makes sense. But if not, we can, we can do the easy math on it and that can help.
No, I mean, it makes sense, but I think that one of the issues with compound interest is there is a positive and a negative to it. And hopefully people are taking advantage of the positive or at least once they get out of debt and are making a salary or making money, even in, you know, part-time job, they're able to save a little bit. So I want to hit on savings before we kind of have to do our breakout sessions. I know that Kelly, you know, with Grow, you guys are always writing saving and investing stories. Is there one tip from that that's hit a lot of users lately that they seem to gravitate towards on saving money?
I think the big one is that flip side of compounding where the earlier you start, then the more time you have for that magic of compounding to come in. There are, this is my nerd alert, but really some really cool charts from the Federal Reserve that show that somebody who starts saving like, say, like 25 and they're putting aside a small amount per year. If they did it for like 10 years, they're going to end up with more than somebody who starts 10 years later and ultimately contributes quite a bit more money just because they have those extra 10 years in the market. So, you know, start early, even if it's just small amounts, whether you want to save for big stuff like retirement or you want to buy a house, even if you're just putting aside like a couple of bucks here or there to start with, just getting that habit is really going to be powerful and it's going to work to your advantage.
I think the habit forming is a really good suggestion to everyone watching. But Winnie, when you talk about, when we talk about saving, we talk about saving, we talk about investing, we don't talk as much about spending or good spending habits. Is there something that you talk to your children about or your clients about? Having good spending habits start at a young-ish age, you know, to have good habits, whether or not using credit cards or using credit cards. Can you talk a little bit about some ways to have good saving, I'm sorry, good spending habits?
Absolutely. Yeah, Ally, thank you so much. That's, I think, a great question. So, you know, many of us know how to save, but sometimes we just get stuck on like, how do we spend? And so usually when it comes to saving, it can be overwhelming. I always say do snackable saving, right? Bit by bit. But then how do you spend? And the best way to spend is actually, believe it or not, to always sort of have a, either a mental or physical shopping list for everything that's important in your life. So like right now, we're in the holidays, right? And what does that mean in terms of gifting? How much do you, who do you want to, who's on your list? And who do you need to buy something for or get something for? And then my challenge to you would be then, can it be done in an experience format versus spending more money? Because sometimes we feel like we are buying things not only for ourselves, but for people that we care about. But we feel like, because my love language is gifting, right? So we want to do it that way. But I would challenge you to think of other ways because your family and friends and yourself, they don't want to see you get into debt or, you know, stretch your finances on their behalf. They want you to be happy and secure and financially secure. And so oftentimes, you know, I've dealt with so many clients where they feel like I have grandparents saying, oh, well, I just want to get my grandkids this and my kids this and that. And if you circle back and like, if you think about, like, you go through your photo stream on your phone, right? And you look at picture after picture, how many of those pictures actually show the person with the gift or something? Usually you see memories of like your friends and your family, maybe playing in the snow, maybe on vacation. Because those are the things that you want to capture and hold on to. So when you're out there spending, always ask yourself before you actually buy the item, is this a want or a need? And the other thing I would say is if you buy something, let's say you want to buy a new pair of jeans. I challenged this of my clients. I said, leave the bag with the receipt, with the jeans in the corner of your room. And if after two weeks, you didn't feel like you had to go get those jeans and put them on, then you probably should return them. And then, you know, none of us like to return things. And once you do that a few more times, you recognize of the things you really don't need. And so that way you won't spend money on it. And then once you have that sort of internal stop, you'll find that you'll know when to spend and when not to spend because you would have conditioned yourself. So it takes a little while, but after a while, you get really, really good at it. And then, and then you get creative and you spend, and then you spend quality time with people that really want to spend time with you and could care less what you get for them. So maybe that's just a trick for the holidays, but that's what I'm doing in my family.
I love that trick. I mean, I for one, I'm someone who doesn't let anything new go cold. So I have to wear it instantly. But, but I might try that. And, and the act of returning is so arduous and it's such a pain in the butt that it does, at least for me, prevent me from, from spending sometimes because I think, oh, if it doesn't fit, I have to send it back and it's not down the street or what have you. AJ, I want you to talk a little bit though about buy now, buy now, pay later. You know, we, I see Plarna all over, you know, and various sites and some other things. Is buy now, pay later, it's just another credit card, right? Like, we should not be all lured by that. We should, we should kind of have like a red flag, right?
Definitely, you know, buy now, pay later, you should be very cautious when using. For, you know, about 10 years ago, there was a lot of conversation about marketing of credit cards towards young people on college campuses. And it got so bad that people passed laws saying you can't do that because you're luring kids and spending money they can't have. And they end up owing so much more for the compound interest. And buy now, pay later is kind of the 2021 version of that. If you don't have the money now to pay something, save up, get the thing that you want. I'm all for that. I think if after a while, like you feel like you need to get like a pair of sneakers, like get it. But if you can't pay right now, don't do buy now, pay later, because often that can come up and speak up on people. And as a generation, I think Gen Z should be pissed about it, right? It's finding ways to kind of take advantage of the fact that you want the cool pair of sneakers. And if I know anything about Gen Z, is that they're smarter than a lot of us. So I think that's a pretty good one.
Well, I mean, I definitely feel like Gen Z is smarter and people are getting smarter because they're being, they're more skeptical, which they absolutely should be. I think also, one of the things that I just want to touch on and I'm happy for any of our speakers to jump in is, you know, what your parents do with money and/or what your siblings even do with money or your aunts and your uncles, isn't necessarily what you need to do with money or what works for you. I know a lot of people feel a generational pull from their parents. Oh, my dad did it this way, so I must do it. a generational pull from their parents. Oh, my dad did it this way, so I must do it this way. Um, but hopefully you watch enough, uh, financial seminars or you find your own way. And so I I don't know if Kelly, you wanna jump in or Winnie or or AJ, but one of the things we want to make sure people know is like, talking about money is a good thing. And so if your parents didn't talk about money, doesn't mean you shouldn't. And if your parents did, made bad financial choices, doesn't mean that it's automatically in your DNA. It is not hereditary to, and we wanna make sure people are empowered to know that you can control your own path.
Yeah, I'll jump on that actually, cause, um, I I love that question, Ally, cause, you know, my parents, um, came to the United States, not a lot of money. But they were like incredible savers. And, um, but they didn't have a lot of financial literacy. They only knew just to stick money into the bank. And then they bought a real estate project with their friends and the friends, you know, went into bankruptcy, pulled them into bankruptcy. So although they tried really hard doing the right thing, they just, it wasn't in the cards. So that was actually what inspired me to learn about personal finance, uh, in college, um, and and take the personal finance program, which then led me to being recruited into the financial industry. So I think absolutely, you know, you'll you'll be pleasantly surprised that at some point when you get older, the tables sort of shift. You know, we were children and all of a sudden, Ally and I just had a conversation about this just recently of like how it shifts, all of a sudden we become the parents and our parents look to us like, wow, you make better financial, well, they should, cause I'm a financial advisor, but they're gonna look to you too and say, you know more about finances. Let me have you in a meeting and, but whatever you do, be, um, be very generous with the knowledge that you gleaned from today's group from CNBC. And and teach these and share this with other people, because the more you can, the more all of us benefit.
I love that. Kelly, you have something?
I think for some of these conversations too, you know, you'll need to be thinking about, even if you wanna do something different than what your parents did, or you've learned something different maybe than the way that they did things. They'll need them as a partner in a sense, right? When you're filing the FAFSA, a lot of that financial information is gonna come from them. If you wanna apply for your first credit card, sometimes an easy path is being like an authorized user on parents' card or co-signing something with them. And you'll need to know a little bit about their finances and maybe work with them to find a right solution. So think about it like your best research paper at school. You come in with some evidence and you make your case for why you wanna approach something in a particular way, especially if you know that they have a different opinion on it or have previously expressed it, so that you can really show them that you know, you've put the work in, you've learned something, and you're hoping that you can learn and grow as a family to figure this out.
I love that. Yeah, you're a part, you could be a partner, you could be a collaborator, and you bring your your own knowledge to the table. Um, A- AJ, any last words? I know, you know, if people are thinking about filling out the forms, do you have any guidance on, um, resources to send them? We can drop them in the chat as well.
No, definitely. Um, I think in terms of working with your parents, the first place, uh, I see that conversation come up. Uh, is often about what do you wanna do after high school? Whether it be, you know, my dad became an electrician, so he says I should be an electrician too. Or my dad went to Alabama, Alabama, so he really wants me to also, right? And it's the first kind of tension point where you have to decide, what do I want for myself or what different decisions might I make for them? But you are gonna have to work with them if you're gonna fill out the FAFSA, uh, which is the form that every student should be filling out to get uh, student aid. FAFSA stands for Free Application, the federal student aid. There is no income gap, so even if you find out your parents are making more than you think, you should still fill it out. There are funds from the federal government, like grants, that you don't have to pay back, free money on the table, and you need to fill out the paperwork to get. Um, the schools then take that form and then can decide how much student loans they, uh, sorry, how much student aid they wanna give you. Um, so the, and and the hardest part about it is a lot of federal aid funds are given out on a first come, first served basis. You wanna complete the FAFSA as soon as you can for your, um, upcoming college year. Um, and to do that, you're gonna have to work with your parents. So don't just call them out for all their mistakes, right? Don't just like, you know, uh, tell off your parents, right? You gotta work with them. Um, and ultimately, at the end of the day, they're gonna be the people that help you.
I love it. Work with your parents. Don't call them on their mistakes. That's a, it's a good one. Yeah. I mean, I hope that we're not calling out our parents, um, at any age, but still. Um, I think that that we hit on a lot of things and I think, um, I wanna turn it back to Christie to figure out the breakout sessions. If we're ready for that, um, Christie, does that, does that make sense now? I think she's coming.
Yes, it does. I'm sorry, I was new. Um, thank you so much, our panelists, um, our our speakers, um, Ally, Kelly, AJ and Winnie, um, thank you so much for joining us and for sharing this extremely valuable information. Um, I know we all learned a lot like we always do and we thank you for that. And a great, great conversation in the chat room too, students. We thank you for your engagement and and for doing that. So, um, on that note, uh, there's still more fun to come, so please, uh, don't leave yet. Um, I have, I am, uh, very excited to, uh, introduce, as we move to our breakout sessions, where we're going to engage all of our students and volunteers. Um, I'd like to introduce, uh, our, our, our amazing college intern, who was a former JA High School hero. And I was interning with Junior Achievement and is a student at Princeton University. Um, I'd like to introduce Oriana. Oriana Nelson, uh, she is going to explain, uh, some things that we're gonna talk about in the breakout rooms. Oriana, welcome.
Thank you so much for the wonderful introduction, Christie. I just wanna say thank you so much as well to our CNBC panelists today. We were able to offer great financial advice and I'm sure the students were able to learn a lot. But to continue with today's program, we'll talk a little bit about the breakout room activity. During the breakouts, we will be talking about setting financial goals. Setting a financial goal will help you decide what to do with your money. But more than that, it will also help you on how to decide to spend your money more mindfully. Think about financial goals you may have. You can set three types of goals, short-term, intermediate and long-term goals. A short-term goal can be set or achieved within three months. An intermediate goal can be set or achieved within a year. A long-term goal is usually achieved past a year. While money can provide you happiness, managing it well will improve your quality of life. It's important to have short, intermediate and long-term goals for different types of needs. For example, as a college student, I spent a lot of money trying to buy books and, um, buy furniture for my room. So my savings account unfortunately, um, isn't as high as I would like it to be. So was in my years at Princeton, I want to be able to increase amount of funds slowly but surely. So when I graduate, I would have the money that I need in my savings account. My sister's a recent college graduate from Harvard University, and now it's her first year outside of college. She tells me there's a lot of expenses you have to pay for. So I wanna make sure when I graduate college, I have the money I need and savings account backup, just in case I need to get into it. An example for a short-term goal I have is that for the holiday season, it's very easy to spend a lot of money on gifts, whether it's for family or for friends. And I wanna make sure I'm able to create a list of how much I am spending, so I'm able to get a better track of what I'm withdrawing from my account. And I can do that since December is coming up, we're already in the summer, since the holiday season is coming up, I'll be able to do that within three months. Now moving on to SMART goals, as Christie has on the screen, SMART is a great way to plan and achieve your financial goals. SMART goals are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and timely. Let's break this down. So specific, your goal should contain specific details about what you want to achieve. Measurable goals, you're able to measure and track goals, track your progress toward these goals as well. And attainable, your goal should be small enough that you're able to complete it within a realistic time period, as mentioned before, three months, a year or beyond a year. And you're maybe need to break larger goals into smaller chunks, so it was made it easier to reach. And relevant goals, our goals must be related to what you want to achieve. So don't include anything that doesn't move you toward your goal. You don't wanna have distractions or obstacles in your way. And lastly, your goal should be timely. Your goal should have a specific timeframe in which you're going to complete it. Remember, it's good to keep and frequently review your goals, particularly because situations can happen in life. I call your goals to change. Now, Christie will explain the breakout room session activity, where you'll get a chance to talk about your own financial goals with our CNBC mentors. We're really grateful for having them today. Thank you so much, Christie.
All right. Thank you, Oriana. Uh, as always, our, um, intern Oriana um, for Junior Achievement, uh, who was also a former, uh, Junior Achievement High School hero. And, uh, we're so happy to have you continuing with us. Uh, thank you so much, Oriana. So here we go. Let's have a conversation. This is what we're gonna talk about. So in a moment, we're going to go into small breakout rooms. So we'll get together for about maybe fifteen minutes or so, um, and just have have a conversation. Uh, we'll have mentors and students in the breakout rooms. And this is how we'd like it to go. Um, so mentors, when you get into breakout rooms, uh, maybe pick one, one mentor really quick to kind of uh, facilitate the conversation. Um, have introductions, so just small group introductions. These are kind of like mentoring circles. Uh, just name, uh, your name and, um, volunteers, a little bit about your job if you want, students, share, uh, your school. And then we're going to take turns answering the questions. So volunteers, we would like for you to share a financial lesson that you learned as an adult, that you wish you knew when you were younger. Um, something that has really, that that if you could go back in time, uh, some that you wish that you knew back then. Um, and then students, um, we would like for you to share with everybody, what is a savings goal that you can set for yourself? Oriana gave an explanation of, uh, two, two savings goals that she has. Um, it can be a long-term goal, it could be a short-term goal, whatever you think. Um, but think about a savings goal that you can set for yourself. And then students, after you share your goal, um, we can kind of get together with the CNBC volunteers. And, uh, perhaps the CNBC volunteers in your group can kind of give you, uh, suggestions on steps you can take in order to meet that goal. Okay, so, um, I'll give everybody a minute just to look at this screen while I am finalizing the breakout rooms.